Welcome to the January 16th, 2024 City of Angels City Council Agenda Meeting, or Meeting. Rose, if you could take your own copies.
Mayor Hurdman.
President.
Vice Mayor Monkata.
President.
Councilmember Brolio.
President.
Councilmember Shemente.
Present.
Councilmember Sharato.
Present.
Staff is present.
Thank you. Pleasure to meet you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Item three is the report out of closed session. Direction was given on both A and B, and then we're going to continue at the end of tonight's meeting on item B. Item four, approval of the agenda as posted or amended.
Salute. Oh, is there an amendment? Any amendments for?
So I'm going to ask, does anybody have any amendments or any public comment on this? I need to open that up. We don't have anyone online with us, Rose?
No. Just Nate.
Okay, so there are no amendments. Looking for the motion as posted.
Salute.
Second. All in favor?
Shemente.
Welcome.
Oh, hi.
Brolio.
Hi.
Monkata.
Hi.
Hurdman.
Hi.
Sharato.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item five, public comment. The public may address the council on any item of public interest, not otherwise on the agenda that is within the jurisdiction of the city. No action may be taken. Matters to be addressed may be referred to city staff or placed on a subsequent meeting agenda. Speakers are limited to five minutes per person. Do we have any public comment? And we still have nobody with us online?
No, just Nate.
Okay, seeing no public comment, we'll close that and move on to our consent agenda. We have two items on consent. Anybody have any reason to pull either of those items for discussion? And any members of the public need to pull any items on the consent? Seeing none, coming back, looking for a motion for our consent.
Salute.
We have a motion. And a second.
Shemente.
Hi.
Brolio.
Thank you.
Monkata.
Hi.
Hurdman.
Hi.
Sharato.
Yeah. Thank you.
Regular agenda, item seven A. This is our Utica Park update. Amy.
Mayor, council members, most of this item will be addressed under item seven B. But just a reminder, tomorrow's our community meeting where we will be talking about outdoor gym equipment at the park course on the 23rd. We'll be continuing to do the text for our interpretive signs. And I'll address the geotechnical issues under the next item. But I would be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Any members of the public have any questions or comments? So bringing it back, it looks like we're tracking along under budget. We're still, did we get the, I guess I missed that part. Did we get the children's stuff ordered, the play equipment?
No, not yet. Really close, though.
Okay.
And, well, there aren't any questions. And we're still on track to break ground, do March?
We're going to get to that on the geotech.
On the geotech.
I know.
That's not what happens on item seven B.
Okay.
So, but if March were the date, we're still not behind by not having ordered the equipment yet until, as long as we get by end of February or end of January.
We're still okay with that.
Okay. Any other questions?
Sorry, very much. Park course equipment.
Park course?
Yeah, can you just define that?
Yeah, basically, if any of you have ever gone to Columbia College and done their park course, it's like the trail, and you stop at various little exercise things. And once a stretching thing, and once a sort of.
Unbalanced.
Little stations.
One is like pull-ups.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And there's usually a low level, maybe a low level and a chock level.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you for the updating. Moving on to seven B, we're looking for approval of resolution 24-10, authorizing geotechnical investigations for Utica Park and Lightner Mine, expansion and rehabilitation project of 60,393, and then authorizing the city administrator to execute all applicable documents. Amy.
Mayor and council members, approximately $45,000 of this, $40,000 of this was already going on. This is for an additional $20,000. That additional $20,000 puts it over our $50,000 limit to do in-house. It's to allow for testing on the existing Utica Park parcel as opposed to just the expansion parcel. And thank you to town for bringing it. More maps than I ever knew could exist on the underground workings of the Utica and Lightner Mine. Way cool. Got to say.
So concern is with the existing ground under the existing park? And so we're being proactive?
Yes. Yes. And once it's done and everything is remediated, should we ever want to do any additional work out there? Add anything additional? We're done.
What area of the existing park are they concerned about?
So basically, the existing park has a south shaft, which we believe is under the path. Across shaft, which I'm guessing is somewhere near Sam's Way. And then the north shaft, which is probably in the middle of the highway somewhere.
Wow.
So there's that. And, sorry. I mean, I know we don't have a crystal ball. It's like, are they going to come back for more? Yes, they are. No, we don't. They're going to come back for two more. One is to design the closures. And then the third one will be to monitor how those closures happen in the field so they can sign off. So they've already.
The mitigation.
Yeah.
Okay. What they find. And that's on the tunneling. Not tunneling, but boring, the testing.
They should, they ought to test us to death.
Yeah.
Okay.
So how long are those going to be? So the boring, the mitigation, and the monitoring, how much time does that add?
The mitigation happens during construction.
Oh, it does. So they're going to fill in during construction?
Yes.
They're just identifying now and then?
And then they design the closure. They say, and this one, you're going to pour this much concrete in.
Right, slurry on the tile or whatever. Okay.
So that's going to be a change order with their current contract, Boyer's current contract.
Yes.
Whatever they have to do in addition, if they have to do anything.
And that mitigation work cannot be used, any of the grant money cannot be used for that? That needs to be our, or we can't?
That's, that's psych crap. It's psych crap. But we just, we're limited on that. So, you know, that's why, it was important to take that $400,000 from the COVID relief money and push that over to that Utica project in case, who knows?
At these unknowns.
What's going to happen? So.
So this doesn't mess up the budget too much? It's $20,000 additional dollars of?
This is all.
Geotech, but it's all?
It's all the park. Yep.
When will they be done with this?
They will. We actually told them that pending your approval, to please go ahead and start scheduling.
So he was, he was getting them on schedule.
He was scheduled.
Yeah. Yeah. And they didn't sign anything. We just told them to please put us on their calendar. This, it says that they prepared the proposal with the understanding that this is not a prevailing wage project, blah, blah, blah. If this is incorrect, please let them know. So I just want to make sure.
Yeah.
Yes, we're, we should be okay because we hired, we'll either have them go under Boyer's contract or whatever we have to do to do that. Okay. There are ways to handle that. Ready?
Any public comment on this?
Maybe we'll start the part.
Okay, sorry, bringing it back. Any further questions or comments from council?
I'm sorry, did you say it was done?
So, so long as this gets approved, we tell them to go forward in maybe two weeks. But the idea was, if they knew where stuff was, they're going to finish up the design. So we can still stay on schedule.
Good, yeah.
And, and because I had procurement already up to 50, 40 of this was already approved. So they were already working through the desk reviews. So then the next step was going to be scheduling the boring and the boring and the. We're actually going to have ground penetrating radar. I'm so excited over that. I'm sorry. They need to see if they're. They're going to see if there's rebar in the cement, which probably.
That's way cool.
Yeah, which probably.
There might be some bumpers in there.
One of us wants them to go across the street to the full graveyard.
That'd be kind of.
Where they say they have, where they say they have relocated the bodies.
Wow. Don't take too far.
Off the record, off the record, that'd be pretty fun.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Have watched too many TV shows.
Okay, so looking for a motion for resolution 24-10. I'm buying.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion and a second, Rose? Shemente?
Hi.
Brolio?
Hi.
Monkata?
Hi.
Hurdman?
Hi.
Sharato?
Hi. Thank you.
Thank you. Takes us to item seven C. This is the approval of resolution 24-09, accepting an offer of dedication for a roadway off of Wilson Street as offered to the City of Angels on the Glen acre subdivision map recorded in Book Two of Subdivisions, page 15 of Calvers County Record. Amy, obviously.
Mayor and council members, this is a subdivision, as you can tell from the map. And that was always supposed to be a future road. It was offered for dedication on the map when it was reported. We have no record that we actually accepted it. And now that we are developing Foundry Lane, it is actually sort of like an emergency in and out. We have been using it for many years to get to our lift station. That's how we get in and out. People have gone through a gate. Some people have keys. So we're just trying to formalize and make it clear that we did accept that. Be happy to answer any questions.
Amy, it's not uncommon to not always accept. They can just hang out there as offers of dedication for quite some time, right?
Yes.
So this isn't that unusual, is it?
No, not at all.
We just need to clean it up.
Right. Since it looks like we may actually use it.
When we need it, yeah. And that, of course, means we have to maintain that.
Except that I believe our acceptance here is not, does not include maintenance? Does that recall? Which is also not uncommon. See, I think our.
It's an easement dedication? Yeah, so, so no, 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 easement, dedication. Probably a little what? You get a fee dedication, and you have to own it. So then you maintain it. Easement, they would still maintain it most of the time.
Okay.
So this gives access to the landowner on the other side, in and out all the time, and us, and every, or what?
Yes.
Okay.
And you said there's a gate?
There is a gate.
So that needs to be.
Everybody has lots. There's about three or four lots. Ours is one. I'm guessing KJN is one.
Yeah.
Okay. Other question, members of the ballot? Anybody have any questions or comments, please? Seeing none, bringing it back to council for final conversation, or anybody have any?
I love seeing the old map.
When was this subdivided? When was this map reported?
It was 19, I want to say it was 19.
Forty-seven.
Yeah, look, it's, look at that writing.
Yeah, 1947.
Okay. I will make the motion to accept the offer of dedication for, in the resolution 24-09. Second. Do we have a motion and a second, Rose? Shemente?
Hi.
Brolio?
Hi.
Monkata?
Hi.
Hurdman?
Hi.
Sharato?
Hi. Thank you.
Moving right along, we have item seven D. This is discussion and directions from the city on, I'm sorry, from the city council on public bathrooms.
Okay, so this conversation we had last year at some point. And now that there is another business opening, they have brought forward the need to have public bathrooms. Subsequent to this being put out for, to council for public, I also have a follow-up conversation with Greville, Tisornia, and Nate Allen and the CSG. And due to the fact that their bathroom, they have one bathroom in there, they would need a secondary bathroom.
Who?
The quarry.
The quarry?
Okay. Yeah, Greville, Tisornia, and Nate Allen. They can't build another bathroom in there. So the option is they could have that one bathroom because it is ADA accessible. But the alternative would be the city restrooms for the other hours. In walking with legal counsel, the pickle porch lease is specific to pickle porch.
Not quarry.
Not quarry and not Yummy Haha. So we would either need to enter into separate agreements with any other businesses that would want to take responsibility for cleaning the bathrooms and opening and closing them, or you could direct staff to assume responsibilities for the bathrooms on the days and hours that are outside what is already contemplated in the pickle porch.
Is it still going to be called Yummy Haha? Or I bet that the name was going to change that.
Um, they're going to keep it, it'll be this for now.
Well, I thought it was still the same.
And then they might change it.
Exactly.
And so they have no restrooms in their new location?
The restroom that they have is a non-ADA compliant bathroom that the only way to get to, you'd have to walk through where they prepare food and environmental health will not allow the public to do that. So it would be a, a non-public restroom. So they have to post a sign at the front saying no public restrooms available and that they can direct customers to go to where the public restrooms are. But we did have to work with environmental health and CSG to figure out how to get around that stipulation because they, any restaurant that serves food technically is supposed to have a restroom for customers.
So currently, the city is reimbursing rental to maintain those public restrooms? I thought we were buying supplies.
We, we buy the supplies and we maintain them. And then Greville gets a discounted lease rate for utilizing the bathrooms and cleaning them on the days that the business is open.
So there's two days out of the week that she doesn't operate, and that would be the two days that we would entertain a lease with Yummy Haha?
Yes, but then the quarry also needs hours that extend beyond pickle porch and operating hours.
And beyond.
We're not talking about the quarry.
We're not, but.
You're just giving us a hint.
I'm giving you a heads up because Yummy Haha is now not the only one that is serving that.
I see where you are.
So what are the hours that, what are the hours of the quarry? What are the hours that we need to be open for those two?
The days that the quarry is open, I believe align with pickle porch days, but their hours go till nine, at night.
Okay.
So what time, so she closes at three, the porch at?
Two, I think.
Yeah, eleven.
And her current lease, the current agreement that we have specified the hours? Or didn't it say?
During, during.
Hours of operation?
During hours of operation.
But if I remember right, there was discussion where Greville had said that she's down there preparing and cleaning and doing things, and she was keeping it. So if, if her hours of operation at the porch end at three, she's down there until six, or sometimes eight, or she's across the street, she's keeping those bathrooms open quite late. But I don't know what the, I don't remember what the contract said.
Probably not, not till my, I mean, under.
No, 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 not till.
So their hours are three, seven, Wednesday through Saturday, and then Sundays are five.
What, the quarry?
Yeah. Because I've been there quite a few times, but like seven, they're.
Okay.
So I don't think they're staying open till now.
What time did we normally close? When we, when we prepare, five?
I, I don't know.
And this five?
I'm just going off of what Nate, Colin, and Greville were telling us while we were meeting with them.
Right, but didn't you guys, wasn't this whole plan because in order to get at more of a maximum capacity, that's where the second bathroom came in? But have they committed to the, I'm talking about for the quarry.
For the, for the restaurant.
For the quarry, yes, so.
No, I think even with the forty, they were talking about,
Are they?
It was the number going about 49 that.
So I think, I think we're jumping the gun on talking about the quarry tonight because I think the quarry is trying to.
Well, I'm.
So I think we just need to talk about Yummy Haha.
I'm just saying, that's not the only, that's not the only business.
But I think that's the direction.
But for right now, I'm just asking, or do you want us to enter into an agreement with Yummy Haha?
I think it's a event. It's two days that we don't have to maintain it.
Except, unless, unless I can't, unless I don't see it, and I've been looking every time I drive by and I pick up the map, I don't see any sign that says public restrooms. So we don't have, but yet we're paying for supplies for those restaurants. So in essence.
And all the businesses direct them, they need to go down there.
Right, I mean, is there, was there ever? It had to be when it was.
It wasn't in the CEB.
There was a sign that said rest stop. I don't know if it's a public restroom, but it did say rest stop, yeah.
And I think it was built with grant money, right?
Yes.
So that's part of the reason we have to keep them up because of.
And I'm okay with that. But shouldn't we advertise the fact that those are public restrooms?
It depends. The more, the more you advertise, the more people use them.
Yeah.
So.
What, okay, can I go back to Yummy Haha a little bit? Thanks.
Yep.
What are the days, so I, so they, so what are the days that Yummy Haha are open?
It would be their, the days that the pickle porch is not.
So Monday and Tuesday. So they need Monday, Tuesday.
About the same hour, like during the day? I mean, if they're not.
So they're, yeah, I mean, they're probably open like 11 to something is what I'm guessing.
And I don't think they've entirely figured that out yet because they're still.
But they're enthusiastic about this same opportunity because they don't have a public restroom and they're a food establishment.
They, yes, they have to have.
Yeah.
And this is their only option?
This is their only option.
I mean, if I'm going into some sort of agreement with them to cover Monday, Tuesdays, the, it doesn't make sense to start with the quarry right now because they're not open on Mondays and Tuesdays anyway. So I think Monday, Tuesdays, are they open? Do they want them to be open beyond what pickle porch is on Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday?
They're not sure.
Okay. So you're looking for direction?
To start this conversation.
To start this conversation. It's either an agreement with Yummy Haha.
Right.
Or we have staff do it.
I think I know who the owners are of the Yummy Haha.
The Sean Serendipity?
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, I, I would trust them to take good care of the bathroom. They're good business owners. You know, I think if we wanted to go down that route instead of having our staff do it, I would be hoping that.
My only concern is that when you get so many hands in the cookie jar, then if something were to happen and there was, I don't know, supplies missing or vandalism or something, then it's real uncertain whose watch it was on. You know, was it when, when you had it on your Tuesday? Or was it our public works guys? Because they stepped in because someone was on vacation? Didn't we have language like that in one of the contracts?
And Greville.
Or, yeah, and then, so I would really hope that if we do this and consider this, that it becomes very fluent and they're working together without us. But I mean, Yummy Haha and, and the owners of the other, the pickle porch are working seamlessly. So that if it's not working for the two of them and if they don't agree to disagree, then that's when it's going to get sticky.
We'll come back to that.
Is that what you're kind of pointing to?
Yeah, I'm just worried about then other businesses up until nine o'clock at night, Monday, Tuesday, somebody's sick. I don't know, it just, it's.
Convictions, yeah.
There's a lot.
But I mean, I feel like we need to make this available too. What's in it for Yummy Haha? Other than they don't have another option? They don't get any kind of incentive? They don't get a?
No.
Okay.
They just get a bathroom.
I don't think they can open.
Right, they wouldn't open.
We would not have a business.
Right.
And the other, the place they moved from, they came too expensive.
And it had a bathroom?
It did.
So Monday, Tuesday, those bathrooms are not open at all, period.
Correct.
Unless our.
Unless our staff takes it there.
Unless, unless.
I don't think they're rushing us to do it. Right now, we don't.
I think they are, when Greville's down there.
Right, it just depends. Because she could be down there ordering or doing something. She opens them up. But it's just, it's not, it's not under stated contract.
Correct.
It's not under stated contract.
Correct.
And I don't want to assume that she's going to be like, there are guys who can't be on there at eight o'clock in the morning. And there's times she has to get out at exactly 2:30 or 3:00. So I don't want to assume that she's going to be there because sometimes she can't. So, and her contract specifically says hours of business operation.
So we're, we're okay with those public restrooms being used just by word of mouth? You know, you go into a shop and shop owner goes.
I think they still show up as a public restroom. If you're on Google, it does show.
It's, it says.
I don't know exactly what it says. But I've seen people roll up because whatever app they're using or whatever.
But yes, you're right. Like turners will tell people to go down. Crappy chicks tell people to go down.
Go down and use the restrooms.
Same thing with the bakery. She has no bathrooms at all?
She has, she has a private one, same.
But it goes.
Does she have a bathroom at all?
She has one.
Yes, you'd have to go through the, you'd have to.
And they're okay with it there, but not for Yummy Haha? The health department?
I don't think the health department. So for whatever reason, the health department has not, didn't call her on it.
Well, she's closed Monday, Tuesdays. And the bathrooms are empty that day.
Oh, that's true.
Oh, there you go.
She's, so her alternate.
Don't worry, that's a newer thing? That's in Greville's newer contract? Before it was seven days.
Oh, okay.
So for that business, there was an alternative?
The alternative was.
Public.
Public restroom.
How far do those public restrooms have to be? You have been, there's no proximity?
Technically, under state of storage building code, you're supposed to try to get them within 200 feet. And that's one of the reasons that this is an option for us for some of these restaurants is because of the state of storage building code.
Okay. But in the case, like with the quarry, they have one.
Yes.
So that, that's the benefit, is they have, they have.
They have one.
For me, I said we take over Monday, Tuesday. It's going to get, I don't know, Yummy Haha's going to take care of it. Greville's taking care of it. If any other business wants in on it, then they're going to take care of it. I don't know, for me, it gets kind of tricky. I know it's staff time and everything else, but man.
Thank you, Alvin. I feel like then there's too many hands in the cookie jar. And then if something goes off, like you said, I feel like there's going to be a lot of finger pointing, unfortunately. And I think it's, it's back when we know who to respond to.
And Saturdays, Sundays, we don't have them. I mean, there's guys on call. And I mean, I imagine it's half an hour a day to clean the bathrooms. I, I don't know.
You mean taking it very open on Saturdays and Sundays?
Right, so we would not, well, I'm just thinking of a guy on call. You don't have to take him there. Then they're already done with it. It would be Monday, Tuesday, and we already have staff here. I don't know how much time it would add to somebody's day, though, is the only thing. Because you have to clean them Monday evening. You have to swing by and lock them on Monday morning. Swing by, clean them, lock them on Monday night, and then do the same thing Tuesday.
Well, you have to go twice. You have to open them.
Right, open, but they shouldn't be cleaned because you clean them. I'm just theoretically saying. You just got to open them, kick them open, and then clean when you lock them closed. And then in the morning, they're, should be good to go. But I mean, there's a half an hour somewhere of cleaning the bathrooms.
And that would be done during our normal working hour duty hours, correct? I mean, she's closing the rest, the restrooms now at three because she closes at three, correct?
We're talking about, I think it was Tuesday.
No, no, I know, but all I'm saying is, so I don't, I don't want it to generate.
Overtime.
Overtime.
Right.
It's going to, we already are going to have them do trash, and now we're.
No, I don't know how it's going to generate overtime. I think it's going to be, something's going to give. What, what aren't they going to do?
I know.
That's the issue.
Yeah, and I'm not, I'm not, I think that this is a great opportunity. I think that if you can negotiate an agreement, Yummy Haha, it's a win-win, as long as it's working seamless and the two business owners are, if it's fluid, if it's working, it's flowing properly, I think it should be a good opportunity to get them open. It's now seven days a week and allow Yummy Haha to have that as an alternative for their business, their requirements.
So I may have missed it. Greta is aware, she's aware of Yummy Haha. And they talked and met one another and, and she's okay. But even though she probably doesn't even, I mean, she's.
She was going to give them a key.
She was going to give them a key.
And I, I said, hold on.
Okay, okay.
I'm on you, bud.
Talked to legal, and I said, is this something that she can do under her existing contract? And I said, no, we would have to enter into, that's why it's here today. So if either we enter into an agreement with Yummy Haha, since you lady in the phone, or staff.
I mean, from an operational standpoint, we could make Greville the default and say that they've got to work with her, but we would have to have a separate agreement with them because if somebody gets hurt, you know, it's the whole, that whole deal. So, I mean, at least you could have some accountability that way by making Greville the hub instead of City the hub. But I think, I think ultimately, there's just a much larger question here as to, you know, whether you want to continue under this kind of like privately operated model, knowing it could get more, even more complicated than this, or whether or not to do that. knowing it could get more, even more complicated than this, or whether or not to do that, or I would see how it works, or go to now one more step related.
What would be our, what would be the traditional protocol if a business was wanting to open downtown and they needed the bathrooms to be open? All, all of their operating days, correct? So they're wanting to be open two days, but we don't have the bathrooms open. Would it be traditional for them to come to the city and request us to open them on those two days and us to come up with a way to do it? Or would it be, it would be detrimental to them not being able to open, right? I mean, is this, is this a gift of public funds that we're, we're opening a bathroom for them?
It's a public, it's a public, they're opening a public bathroom, it'd be against public funds.
Okay, so it's just.
So if it's on a day where it's closed, or it's, it's on, on two days where it's otherwise closed, it's completely appropriate for them to come in and say, hey, we'd like this to be different. Here's the limitation on us, you know, if you, if you don't. That being, that being said, I mean, clearly there's no obligation of the city to do that, right? So fundamentally, it's just, it's just a, it's a policy decision as to, as to whether or not you wanna do it.
And also, if we do it for the quarry, if we say, oh, you guys are open till eight and you're gonna take care of the bathrooms till eight, we don't actually have an agreement with them. We have an agreement with Pickle Porch, but we don't, and it's part of the lease, it's not part of the quarry's lease. And so if we say yes to one and no to the other, that looks kind of crappy.
Right, I think one of the, so, I mean, obviously, one of the challenges is always having compensation for Gretel.
Right, with the one lease, not with the quarry that, that is totally separate business.
And if they don't hold up to the standard or keep it up, there isn't like the same kind of default mechanisms that there are for Gretel, which would be same, would be true for Yummy Haha.
Yeah.
Um, I think when you go into the later hours, at least based off my experience in other cities, and then one of the reasons I was talking about advertising is, the concern is, oh, um, home folks will go in there and then vandalism happens.
Exactly.
All right, yeah.
I think we did, we had a lot of.
Yeah, we did.
All these stuff.
B B was there, but.
Rolling through, yeah.
I just think we need to look at the equitability, I know it's not on the docket right now with the quarry, but when you're looking at everybody, you know, we have a lease agreement with Gretel and the Pickle Porch, but we do not have a lease agreement with the quarry and Gretel. And so if you're going to just say, Yummy Haha, you can open Monday, Tuesday, we're gonna have an agreement with you and, and then, or we get staff on Monday, Tuesday, and then we say to Gretel, oh, but you can go ahead and keep the bathrooms open till eight, just take care of it. It, I just, it's not.
Well, and to piggyback off of that, the person who should be most concerned in all this is Rebecca.
Yeah.
Because if something goes wrong with another arrangement, whatever it looks like, then it could jeopardize her good thing that she's had going for Tuesday through Sunday, or Wednesday through Sunday from her operating hours. So I think she's got skin in the game and I think for her to work with this, i- if that's the direction you wanna go, you know, until it doesn't work is when it'll come back to us to go. So I'm okay with that. Um, but I do agree with Caroline that we don't want to show that we're doing favoritism or that we're not willing to work with everybody. We want downtown revitalization, we want businesses open and if we can help them.
Yeah, and I see that, you know, your point.
Yeah.
A lot, you know, I just don't want staff being there till nine o'clock at night, having to come back and pay bathrooms for the.
Well, I think when the quarry is ready, then, then we come back to this, right? Because that's not what's on the docket, Rebecca.
Yes.
We're just.
But we're saying.
We're just coming to Yummy Haha, and I want Yummy Haha to open, I just don't want this to snowball and, and now we're, we have three people down there, or four people down there or whatever, all taking their turns.
Keys are out there.
Keys getting handed in.
And, you know, I mean, at what point did we just take it back to the city and go, okay, it's open, these public restrooms are open from eight to five, Monday through Friday?
So they just signed a five or ten or fifteen.
Well, Gretel, Gretel's lease is off to the side.
Yeah.
But we're open this time to this time and the city's taking the responsibility and passes that. We have to wash our hands of it if you're open till nine or ten or midnight or whatever.
Really, if you do either one or the other, but not.
I would just make sure she has an understanding that she can't decide, decide agreement or hand out keys.
Yeah, she can't do that, because we, both she and us could get in trouble.
Got you.
So Rebecca, currently, um, if, if we were fully staffed, based on your executive director's report, um, and you have a temporary person, is there money in the budget to bring this person on? And so that, that would help with picking up the garbage and that would help with the restroom piece, correct?
Yeah.
Assuming that this, when you're fully staffed.
Yeah. We temporarily are, we're using extra hire.
I mean, you're using extra hire.
He's working forty hours a week, but he just doesn't do on call.
Right.
But the, but the, the, the rub, and we'll talk about this in February, is we don't have sufficient staffing in water and wastewater. So what happens is they have to pull the guy off of the public works, kind of off the public work schedule in order to do what needs to be done in distribution and collection. So that's, that's where we're falling short on the public work side because that's not a mandated, those aren't necessarily mandated functions, but the water and the wastewater are one hundred percent, like if you have a sewer break, you're, you have to deal with sewer break. If we're, if we need to read meters, we need to read meters. If we have to do anything on the water or wastewater side, that's going to always take a higher priority than something on the general public works, roads, you know, kind of general facility units. So we're short there because we are short in water and wastewater. So we're always grabbing from the public work side.
So you, you guys just hired a new somebody for water and wastewater, correct?
Uh, operator.
An operator, and you, you're up to three now out there?
Operators.
We have Sarah, Caleb, Jeremy, uh, Luke, David.
David.
Uh-huh, five.
Five.
Yeah.
Including the new, and Chris, that's what six makes the part.
And then the distribution collection, those would be infield staff. So the infield staff, we've got five plus, uh, plus one out, and then we've got a foreman, but the foreman has been acting as line staff to try to shore up, so we're, we're short there. So I mean, I think we can, we can make it work, we'll have to have that conversation in February, but we definitely need to add a lot.
Yeah, well, and we haven't even talked about the park yet either. I, I think there's merit to what Alvin is suggesting. I, I think it, it's gonna be a heck of a lot cleaner, and I'm not one to add to staff, but I think it'd be a heck of a lot cleaner if we entered, and if we opened and closed those bathrooms on the days that she wasn't present. That way her lease stays her lease and we then can have control over, and not so much the keys or what's going on, but the reality is, I'm saying, I'm gonna open the door for someone else to use it, you know? This is, and maybe it's the posted time that it is and, and people have to deal with whatever they're gonna deal with. And I'm, I'm not a real fan of adding more because I think we are without taking stuff back, but I, I, it might be the best case scenario.
So let me throw, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna ask you, how does that work in terms of like, so if we start opening this up to Yummy Haha and then the quarry and someone, God, I hope this doesn't happen, falls or whatever. Or they get some sort of chemical reaction. Yeah, then how does that work?
Well, depending on what you're talking about, if it's like their person who gets hurt, or if it's like something that the public gets, gets hurt, I mean, that.
It just feels like it's.
The whole reason we just have the agreement for them, for them is, is that you have, it's covered by insurance, um, so, and again, you're, you're really worried about both the situation where it's on them side, their employees, and they do something, like, let's say that Yummy Haha takes it over and they leave, the floor's incredibly slippery, and where Gretel never left it slippery, but then on that day they go in and somebody throws some balls. The reality of it is they would probably turn around and sue everybody, we have an agreement, and then Gretel will be able to say, hey, I'm gonna do it on this month and she'd get out. We would be stuck in it with whoever.
Yeah.
But, but that's what the insurance that requires parting agreement will do.
Either one.
So.
So I have maybe a compromise in my head, I don't know, if it, I don't know if I'm working on it or not. Because I do want a business downtown, I think it's a great, I, I think it's great, and, and that, that's my driving motivation behind this too. So legally, can we enter into agreement with Yummy Haha? With, with a asterisk in there stating if another business comes forward, then the city would null and void that and then we would take over. Can, can we do that? Because I'm just thinking of a third, of a fourth, and I want Yummy Haha to open, but can we take it back if there's more interest of having these public restrooms open past the time of Yummy Haha? The city will then take it back and open on that Monday, Tuesday from eight to five.
So it would be worried a little differently than, than.
Right.
But it could have the same, same effect. I mean, and probably, um, like I said, I would probably make, make Gretel, since she's being compensated for it, the, the whole, the entire thing. So they would effectively have to work through that. But, um, but yeah, so there, there's a way to accomplish what you.
So if the quarry came in, would you then say it's all null and void?
It's all null and void and the city would pick up Monday, Tuesday.
But then who's picking up the after hour?
I don't know, that's why. How.
Whatever. Well, if the quarry's open past three.
I know.
I mean, I guess they have to figure out their occupancy.
They need to figure, I mean, that's my problem is what happens if the quarry's open till nine and it comes up as a bar, they're open till midnight, or somebody, um, the, another bakery moves in downtown and they're open at five thirty in the morning, I don't know.
Disco bakery.
What's happening?
Their disco bakery.
Are we also sure that Yummy Haha's gonna be open Monday, Tuesday?
Yes.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, that, that was, I think they want to be open seven or so maybe.
I mean, I, I want them downtown, I mean, I don't want it to get messy on the back. So I'm willing to help these gen, these people this time, but if, if there's another one that comes in, I wanna go.
Right, but we can revisit it, maybe if the quarry does need it, if something that comes back and we totally revisit the whole.
Right, I just wanna be able to pull out of it if there's more interest down the road of all these weird hours or whatever, I wanna be able to pull out of Yummy Haha and say that we will address your issue with us taking it.
So.
I don't know how you.
That's easy. It's even easy with Gretel, it's just that you wouldn't be in a situation where you could yank back the compensation that she received because you decided to take it back.
No. No, I'll, I'll leave Gretel alone, not her separate.
But making her the hub of this.
Monday, Tuesday.
Opens her contract back up, does it not?
It doesn't.
Oh, so how would you make Gretel the hub of this negotiation?
They just have to work through, through her for purposes.
Just in their language.
Just, you know, in, in terms of getting a key, getting access to the supplies, stuff like that, same thing that the city would.
I don't know, that's just another idea, I don't know.
And I, because what I'm trying, I would try to avoid is what you guys are talking about, which is the, you know, this or that, so that, that way, like when Gretel, she comes in on Tuesday, would be. No, Monday, Tuesday, so once she comes in on Wednesday and there's been a whole bunch of problems, then she would be, you know, she would be gonna apply us, so I don't know.
Because she had the.
Yeah, yes. And again.
Interesting.
So Yummy Haha won't be paying us anything, I mean, they may have to pay us like a dollar, but you know, to get.
That's the price.
But, but they won't be paying us anything and if they do a bad job, we have really nothing that we can do against them except for say we're not gonna let you use the bathrooms on those days and we're gonna go back to closing them down.
Yeah. I think it's, it's, it's a good service downtown, because I do hear some of the businesses on Mondays going, I wish the bathrooms were open, we have nowhere to send people except for the theater, and the theater doesn't love that, so.
Okay, do we have any public comment? Seeing no public comment, we'll keep commenting. Yeah, so we have, we have some discussion, do we wanna, I mean, you're looking for direction to, to send you guys back to the drawing board with your pen and paper?
I think it's number one with the addition of the.
Well, I don't know if you guys need to get this specific because we haven't negotiated with them yet.
Right.
I think, I think the reality of this, it should be as clean as just saying, do you either wanna authorize us to go negotiate something that, that was, it's gonna have to be, come back to be approved by you anyway? In the form of an agreement?
That's fine.
Or, or if you don't wanna go down that road and you don't want entertainment, we would tell them no. Or third, option three, it's, um, city taking over. So there's like option one, yeah, to negotiate, option two, no, we're not doing it at all, we're gonna keep it the way it currently is. Option, option number three is city staff, but I assume the Monday, Tuesday responsible.
I'm good for negotiation with, talking in there about if there's more interest in different hours, then we will, we still will look and take.
And I'm good with option one, is to negotiate.
Me too.
Well.
Make this precious.
You got the direction, is that the consensus?
Is it?
Yeah.
Is that your direction?
I, yeah, I am. Either way, we're gonna come out losers, I think, though, I mean, if something happens and we yank it back and. I, I, I would like us to develop more of a permanent plan, you know, as we develop a budget, you know, I wanna talk about budget and where we are and, and what we are under staff. And I, I think, Alvin, it's, it's a great compromise that allows them to open and we need to open, but is it gonna open the door?
I know.
You know, and we're gonna get slapped around because we let Yummy Haha do it and, I know, I can't do it and.
I know.
But I think it's a good compromise. But I do think we need to have staff work with legal to make sure that everyone understands going in, what we're doing.
Yeah, I think we'll end up with the city at some point, but that's dangerous.
I agree.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's.
Very good.
You good?
Yep.
Okay. Um, moving on, administration report.
Okay, so, um, the, uh, Utah Water Power Authority G P A managers, we've been meeting regularly to shape the agenda for the upcoming January thirty first joint G P A meeting. Um, it'll be held at the Nada Central and starting at four o'clock.
Oh, four o'clock? Okay.
Um, I also had a meeting with key stakeholders, um, including our building and plan review consultant, contractors, architects, draftsmen and dedicated staff. And we went through a pretty productive dialogue addressing some bottlenecks and frustrations in our, in our building permitting system. Um, so we, uh, looked at some various solutions to alleviate some of these challenges, um, and I made sure, you know, to kind of solidify the fact that we, the city is committed to working with everyone, um, we have a service philosophy that we take very seriously, we have a strategic plan that is dedicated to technology development. And so, uh, regardless of what, uh, anyone's historical, um, feelings are about a bottleneck of the city, um, that is not how things are today. So we're committed to, um, addressing the problem. So, um, it was a, it was a good meeting. Um, I went to the ACBA board meeting, uh, we discussed the city's investments and proposals for economic development and beautification. Um, ACBA was mainly focused on their events and event planning, um, and it, it's, it's clear that that is the biggest priority that they have. Um, and they see that those events are their way of contributing to economic development. Um, but we're, we're still missing our, um, our business support and potential business development or development overall opportunities. So I'll be discussing that with council, um, next meeting more in depth. Um, uh, also, we had a subcommittee, uh, meet to talk about, um, uh, some, uh, I guess fire regulations so that that's more, uh, prepared, so when the hall houseworks, uh, group meets, uh, that will be in good shape to review. Um, I had a collaboration meeting with the county CEO and economic development director, um, and they, uh, had, uh, talked to me the fact that they will be, uh, taking to their ward supervisors the evacuation assessment, um, plan as well as the greenhouse gas, uh, plan. They're making a couple modifications to their, uh, plan and then we'll be going to the board, so, um, it should be happening here shortly. Um, and then, uh, Amy and I had a meeting with, uh, the council of governments and the county, uh, to talk about the Safe Streets For All grants um, and figuring out how we can collaborate, uh, together on that. Um, I had the Calvers Visitors Bureau Board Meeting, um, so this was kind of exciting. Angels Camp came up as number two in a archival story on World Atlas about places to, to visit, uh, this year about us, and Amy's was number two, so that was exciting. Um, we also talked about the fact that given that the museum grounds is being used for a lot more events, so like the farmer's market and those, and other things that have been down there, uh, for the public to enjoy on the grounds. We probably are gonna have to look at some lighting, some pathway lighting or, um, some, uh, thermal lighting for safety purposes down there. Um, and then the Booster Way project, we're really close to being able to issue an RFP for construction, so that will be happening here pretty soon. So that will be happening here pretty soon. Um, I'm meeting with, uh, the GMs from UPUD, Utica, CCWD. We, we called it the HRU, but it's the Highway Four Unit, uh, where we all kind of are relying on the same water, water supply, uh, in order to kind of coordinate and outline necessary steps, um, for water access and safety. And, um, I think that is about it. But I've just been busy and got through the holidays and now we're catching up on everything that's going on here. And the benches should be delivered, uh, mid-February.
What about the trash can?
Um, we still have to finalize those and order them.
What about the Christmas decorations coming down?
Those, um, I got the the quote back because they were trying to work on the lengths. Because we have, there's three actual, three different lengths that go across the road. Um, and so she was, um, finalizing those, but then we should, um, be able to order the lights to go across the little.
What did you say?
And I'm just saying, and taking down what we've got up.
Caltrans issued our health fund, so it should happen pretty quick.
Okay.
Separate permit for taking them down than what is given for COVID.
Annual has to be renewed and they wouldn't let us take anything down until they renewed our annual permit.
Um.
It's festive.
How festive?
It's it's kind of like Valentine's Day-ish.
It's red.
It's red.
Okay, that's it. Looking at, um, council. Uh, should we say this?
Last, well, on the sixth, I attended the fifty B's grand opening. We're excited to have them in town. There's also a taco truck that's going to be part of that establishment.
It's open.
And it's open and doing well. And, um, you know, as I was listening to the presenters and listening to the folks, uh, I thought to myself, every new business is a boon to every other business in our community, you know, because it brings people in and, uh, it, if you, if you haven't been there, you take some time to walk through, I mean, to handcraft and it's just, it's a really cool place and they've done a really nice job, um, in there. So I, I wish them the best. Tomorrow, I'm going to attend a CPPA meeting and and it was one of the things that I talked about last month is, and it's kind of good because, well, if 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 we had not met tomorrow, uh, Western, who does all the power transmission for the seventeen Western states? Um, and it's, it's, it's been a while, but now there are true ups and there are kind of mid-year increases or decreases. And, uh, we're coming back that because of everything, all the good things that are happening, we're going to see about a two cent per kilowatt drop in our rates. And one or two things can happen to those dollars that are going to flow back to all the member districts. One of them is that we can add it to the rate stabilization fund. That rate stabilization fund was set at three million dollars. It's currently about two point four million. In my past life, I would have said, you know, we should take all this, all this additional dollars and stick it there because the rate stabilization fund really helps member districts if something spikes or changes and we can't find the money mid-year. But if you folks are okay with it, I think because of state of, of, you know, the economy in our state and with the and with the budget and with some local districts suffering financially, I really believe that those dollars should be passed back as a, as a six-month savings. I talked with Michelle briefly when it was, uh, previously, the savings would have been about fifteen thousand dollars for us, just down and dirty. I mean, now if it's going to go another cent and a half, it could be as much as thirty thousand. So if you folks are okay with it, uh, you know, it's going to be my recommendation to support either motion or make one that says that we need to flow those dollars back to the districts. So, and that's all I have.
Okay.
So down to fifteen to thirty thousand, was that coming back to?
Yeah, it would.
That was our, our.
Well, yeah, it's, it used to be, when I was at Bret Hart, uh, every cent was twenty-five thousand dollars that cost the district. So now, but it's going to be mid-year. That was on an annual basis. And so that's why Michelle, she kind of said, you know, maybe, Mike, it's going to be like thirty for a year. Well, if it's for six months, it it would be that that fifteen. But now they've actually increased it another penny.
Based off what I did.
Based off what you, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, because it was going to be eighteen and a half and now it's seventeen and a half. And it's currently twenty cents a kilowatt.
Yeah, because we dipped into that reserve a few years ago when I was on that. Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, they just approved that.
Yeah.
Increase. Yeah, okay.
So, that's all.
Alvin?
Nothing to report at the moment?
It's about the same thing, nothing to report. Uh, next week, you I'm on the Calcania League of Cities and then, um, last, oh, is it on the twenty-second, Rose, or is it on the twenty?
I have it as the twenty-second.
Okay.
Correct.
Um, I was also scheduled to attend fifty B's and I got super sick and I emailed them and told them and they didn't know, so they were waiting for me. But, um, I've gone in, I've emailed her and gone in and it is a very exciting. It's great. Yeah. And I've eaten at that taco truck before and it's really good.
Yeah.
Where was it before?
It was in Yummy Ha Ha.
That's okay.
And I don't know, are they moving around or are they?
No, she's. I think so too.
Yeah, it's really good, so.
I I love the question. Uh, I think the vice, vice chair of ACBA did the presentation. And, oh, and we have Mike Chumiti. So how long have you been on the city council?
Two months.
Seventy-four days.
Exactly.
And the other thing I have to report is that we had a, a special meeting with you for UWPA. It was actually today. Uh, Caroline was sworn in for her oath of office. And we also, um, made decisions to do a contract amendment for, uh, Stan Tech, which is our, uh, our consultant that we're working with for the FERC exemption. They're the, the deep dive on the FERC exemption paperwork. And, uh, it's a nineteen thousand dollar amendment to their contract to continue us through some key times that we need to get through, uh, which was all within the budget. It was just a matter of needing to move it from the reserve account into the, the contract. Um, it was a little over nineteen thousand. And the notifications have gone out for the exemption. So all stakeholders and and people have been, uh, now notified that our intent is to, rather than do a FERC relicense, is to do an exemption for the FERC. And that's in progress. So there's just a lot of, lot of meetings and a lot of, um, scheduled, there's going to be a meeting scheduled this week as well as on January twenty-fifth with these stakeholders to try to answer any questions that they might have and work them through any issues.
Prior to the comment. Like, right.
Yeah, get in front. And that's all I have. Caroline?
Uh, yeah, got sworn in. I spent three hours with Joel last week talking about UWPA. Um, got brought up to date on a whole lot of stuff. And then I spent this morning about two hours with Michelle Ragio on Cog and got my binder or both of them. Yeah, I was sorry, plus it, yeah. Um, so I got a whole bunch of information on both of those. So that's been good.
Okay, um, calendar, Rose.
On the League of Cities, which, um, Isabel mentioned, we also have, the biggest one that's coming up is the JPA meeting on the thirty-first, which is at the Native, um, Hall.
And we're thinking, is, is that going to be open to the public?
Yes.
Yes.
And so it starts at four and we think it's going to go for Okay. And will we see the, an agenda?
Yes.
Prior?
Yeah, it's got the same posting requirements. Uh, the only thing is we will not have virtual access. The logistics of trying to do a virtual update sense is too heavy. So, um, it'll be. Okay, um, and then on calendar, what I have is we do need to decide when we want to kick off the infrastructure subcommittee and the finance policy subcommittee. Uh, so we didn't nail that down, but I'm open to some suggestions.
For the, for the initial first meeting or for, they're going to be on the third blah, blah, blah of every whatever?
Uh, yes.
I guess, and yes.
Can we not do January?
We can not do January. We can start in February.
Can we?
Yeah.
Um, and February thirteenth, the UWPA meeting got moved to that date.
Yeah.
Thousand.
Okay.
The UWPA meeting got moved to February thirteenth. I am out of town.
Okay.
So if you go to that, it's like old timey.
So for your, for your purpose, uh, it was Rose, it was originally scheduled for the twenty-ninth, right? The next UWPA meeting? And it's been pushed off from the twenty-ninth to February thirteenth. And that is then the February meeting. There's no more February twenty-seventh.
Okay, yeah. Um. Um, so I'll just throw.
Throw out some.
I'm sorry, uh, second Monday of every month.
It's on fine, we can do afternoon.
Okay.
Or even like one.
Okay.
You're not talking about the many of the same.
Let's just do which one is.
I believe that's all.
It's in, I don't know.
It's in the minutes.
Yeah.
I'm on the infrastructure.
I'm on finance.
So.
So if Alvin and.
I think it was Alvin and I.
Did any mornings, any day mornings were better for you or mornings?
Tuesdays or Wednesday, I mean, I could do Monday morning too, as long as we're just before ten AM.
Mondays are better.
I'm good with Monday morning, like eight o'clock.
That's fine.
I mean, seven forty-five, six forty-five.
Okay. Well, I'm just. It's gonna be a while now.
Let's get some coffee and go and, yeah.
I mean, I guess that would be fine too.
And permanent.
Okay. And then the other one is Alvin.
What, password again?
Yeah, so if we did Renee, like, maybe, maybe, yeah, it's fine.
Okay, Monday, first one.
First Monday of the month?
Yeah.
Eight AM.
Yeah.
Okay, February.
I do think I should.
Which would be the best.
I do already know.
Okay, and then finance policy.
How about Thursday for finance? We've already figured it out. Thursday's in the afternoon.
Which ones?
You pick which one?
Yeah. Um, do I want to do like?
Maybe a week that's not a council, like a second week?
On a, on a week, um.
Well, in February, that's kind of weird.
Is that on Thursday?
No, that's the Wednesday. Thursday's the fifteenth.
That's right. What, David, you're talking about Thursday?
Thursday. We could say the sec- so, but then that's a council meeting. If you say the second Thursday, sometimes we'll fall in a council meeting.
Um, that's a council meeting.
We have. No, we have to set one, two, three.
The sixteenth.
But then the third Thursday of March is the council meeting.
So I should be.
We don't have a council meeting on.
Oh, I see, I see, I see. Yeah.
Second week.
Yeah.
Alvin.
Um. I'm fine with the eighth, but that's a council week.
I'm fine with the.
I'm also fine with the nineteenth, the week of the nineteenth. The twenty-second, we meet then.
I'm fine with that. Either the eighth or the twenty-second.
The twenty-second would work for me.
Okay.
And then what's I?
Okay, afternoon. Uh, like two? That work for you?
Mm-hmm.
Shouldn't that work for you?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So we just have to figure, so we'll, Rose and I will figure out like what that looks like in terms of calendar. Because it's, that would be the fourth. Thursday, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, but sometimes it'll end up at the end of the month. Yeah. I'm afraid it's like mostly.
Okay, but just work. So the infrastructure one, back Monday, so that is going to be the twelfth. The first one will be on twelve.
What, we do the second Monday or first?
I thought it was the first, yeah.
Uh, first Monday, the other one.
I wrote that.
Is that going to be too much with it being city council week too?
No, because we would have already had to put anything out.
You already, you already posted it on Friday.
Um, well, hold on.
Twenty-second, right.
We could change.
Go opposite.
The fifth. Yeah.
And after this, like, back to a second.
And we could change it two months from now, too.
Yeah, I mean, we can just see if that works and then the next one.
Yeah. You want to go the second Tuesday or the second? And your second Monday?
Twelfth, yeah.
And you're talking February, right?
February, that's all.
Okay.
And then finances, February twenty-second.
Two.
Two PM, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item eleven is correspondence. We had a letter of support for, uh, Utica Water and Power Authority applying for uh, the canal lining project, water smart scale. And any other correspondence?
How much, I didn't see that in the letter. How much was the grant?
Um, the maximum project, uh, is two hundred thousand and it's got a fifty percent match. But I don't know what the size of his project was. The, the maximum for this, um, they had, they were like small grant applications with a fifty percent.
Which is something that they're budgeted for.
It is maximum two.
It would match. I think what they were trying to do is they would match what we have budgeted.
Okay, okay.
So there's twenty.
They have to do that. I I call it, what is it called? The? The gunite?
It's gunite.
It is gunite.
Oh, oh, so that's.
So they have thirty thousand budgeted and then go for thirty grand.
Okay.
Sixty.
They're sixty, right.
Yeah.
Okay, future agenda items?
Um, well, we have mid-year. Um, so that'll be a pretty hefty lift because we'll be, uh, mid-year through the first half of the year where we've got projections going forward through June thirtieth. Uh, we'll go over some high points. Zoom bombing, uh, yeah, we need to do, and the council handbook as a study session. Um, but I don't know when we want.
Isn't this where we use Teams, though? Because Zoom bombing is a thing on Zoom and that's why we're using Teams now.
Different issue.
Oh.
You're.
You're thinking of when they were, um, signing.
Hijack the meeting.
They were signing on the meeting.
Yeah, so that, 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 that was a Zoom issue. Um, so we've had out of state, out of, um, area, things that was coming in and using.
Yeah.
Racial epithets and.
Yeah. Camp supervisors had that same issue.
Yep.
Our county? During meeting?
Mm-hmm. During Zoom. I don't think they Zoom any longer.
Yep, like our jurisdictions have stopped then because of, you're going to make those kind of statements.
Yeah.
The embrace.
Yeah.
Thank you. So all three of these are on the first meeting in February or you're not sure yet?
Um, no, so we will have the, um, the reimbursement policy because I just got that back, uh, from people review. Um, I'll have to work with Donovan.
Yep.
Will be, will be all the for the next one.
For the next, yeah.
Yeah. Um, and then, uh, council handbook, um, I'll talk to you because we have, well, I guess that would be my question. So we have the finance policy subcommittee. Is that something that we would want to hash out kind of a rough draft there and then bring it to council or have it handled more like a study session for all of council?
I mean, probably more helpful just to do it for council of the differences of, of his opinion. So.
So should we do an update lead for that?
I, I mean, I, I, that's an uply, hefty topic to put, to put into a regular meeting, so.
Yeah, I don't.
My recommendation is to do it in a special.
So.
And the adoption would be a typical meeting.
Yeah. But the study question itself. Uh, so Rose and I can work on some dates and have that discussion at the next meeting in terms of when you want to do that. Um, and then, what else?
Museum ordinance will come out soon. I put it to March, so I'm going to do that one.
Okay. Yeah, so, um, I would say probably a, a lot of the meeting is going to be, uh, surrounding budget, budget discussions. So we can get some direction for.
And a mid-year update.
And.
I'm going to miss a portion of the meeting. Um, I don't know if it'll be the first portion or the second portion. My phone is dead.
Which, uh, the next, the next.
Of the year ahead, the February. My phone, four, what is it?
It is six.
Six. So I'll have to figure that out with you guys. And. Bye.
Never mind.
Okay. Okay, so we are going to close, uh, open set regular session and go back into closed session at this time. And then we'll report out at the very end. Thank you all for attending.
Good job.